Good evening. Welcome to the June 13th regularly scheduled Valley View School Board meeting. I ask that you silence your phones, rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by a member of the Durs.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Zach, the board affirmation statement, please.
Our mission is to empower every learner to be college, career, and life-ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as a productive citizen.
Mr. Gazzafi, the agenda.
We are recommending the agenda be approved with the removal of 12.2. Item 12.2 be removed, otherwise approved with that revision.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. The ayes have it. I want to deviate real quickly off the agenda if I may. We've been joined this evening with our new state senator, Mr. Mattson, Eric Mattson. If you would come up real quick, he's been out knocking on doors, getting to know the district since he's been appointed. I just wanted to have him here to say hi and just kind of welcome you to the district.
Thank you for that time. That's great. Senator Eric Mattson, I'm sure I've walked on, knocked on a lot of your doors. I've been out there. Please excuse the way I'm dressed. It is a tad bit warm out there. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to be here with the board. It's nice to introduce myself to you. I've been your state senator now for almost seven weeks and it's a phenomenal job I find jumping into it. I'm about waist-deep and I'm loving it. Like I said, I'm out knocking doors deeply. I like that thing where it says we're all in this together because we are. And I want to let you know, I'm with you every step of the way. I do have a primary coming up and I plan on, I am out working hard and I plan on keeping the job. I look forward to seeing you again. I'll thank you for the time. I know you have a very prolific agenda and recognizing a lot of people, which is phenomenal. You're doing a great job here and if you don't have any questions, I'll see you in the fall.
Thank you. And he's been great to work with so far. Open door policy, you call him, you get a call back. I know he's out knocking on doors, does take him a little bit of time to get back sometimes, but it much appreciated and we look forward to working with you. So thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do for the district.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
Moving down the agenda, student and staff recognition, spotlight video, STEP, Matthew Q. Who's handling that?
Matthew, tell me what the most important thing that you've learned as a student at STEP.
I'm going to be more social.
Describe a little bit for me how you know you're more social. Are you more outgoing? Have you made more friends? How do you know that you're more social?
Making more friends.
Who are your best friends here at STEP?
Really?
And what about the teachers? Who are the teachers that you've come to enjoy being in their classroom the most?
Mr. Jay and Ms. Pave.
What are you going to be doing after you leave STEP?
Going to JJC.
And what are you going to study?
Charleston.
You want to be a writer?
Yes.
Or do you want to be like a TV person, like somebody who's on TV?
Writer.
What do you enjoy most about writing that makes you think, okay, this is a profession that I would like to go into? Reviews of movies, TV shows, video games? What do you like reviewing?
Video games and movies and food.
Okay, so let's go through each category. Video games. What are your favorite video games to play?
Play Halo.
What about movies? What are your favorite movies to watch?
Action.
Give me an example or two of action movies that you really enjoy.
Galaxy.
And then what about, you mentioned TV shows too. What are your favorite TV shows to watch?
Flash.
Any others?
Cooking shows.
What are you going to miss most about STEP after you transition out of STEP? Last question for you, Matthew. If you were to talk to a student who's coming into STEP, what's the most important thing that you would tell them about what they are going to experience on the STEP campus?
It's like a family here.
Moving down the agenda, ISHA girls track and field. Wait a minute. Is that the corrected version? It also has Romeoville High School girls, boys track and field, and all-state. So that's the corrected version.
Sorry it's been a long time since I've been asked to step up to this mic, but that being said, school board leaders, leaders of our district and community members. I am Mike Strode. I'm the very proud athletic director at Romeoville High School. It is my honor to call up to the podium, a longtime teacher and head track coach, Steve Stasansky, to talk to you about two very, very special student athletes. So without further ado, Coach Stasansky.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out. I'd like to recognize two student athletes, one from the girls' track program, one from the boys. The first one I'd like to introduce is Mia McGlyer. Come on up. Mia was a state qualifier in the long jump with a distance of 5.43 meters, competed down at Charleston, ended up taking 20.5th in the state in the long jump. She is only a junior, so we're looking forward to her coming back next year and having great success. I've also had her in class, so I've experienced her in class in AP US history and is a fine student also. So this is Mia's certificate and is a state qualifier and will be back next year. The next athlete from our boys' track team is Joel Enyon. Joel is a school record holder in the high jump. Joel is a four-year track participant at Romeoville High School, a two-year state qualifier, and placed seventh in the state this year with a high jump of six feet, four and three-quarters inches. And like I said before, he is graduated this year, so he's going to continue his education at JJC and is going to compete at their track program that has started in the last year in the high jump there. So again, Joel placed seventh in the state this year with six feet, four and three-quarters inches. And I too had him in class and he's an excellent student in AP classes. Joel?
Think about that. Next up, Bolingbrook, Mr. Rose, high school girls, boys, track, field, and all-state.
Thank you, President Quigley, members of the board, Assistant Superintendent Gary Gazzafi. Which I would also like to say, Gary, over the last 10 years, I just want to thank you for all the support that you've given Bolingbrook High School activities and athletics. I wish you all the best on the golf courses that I'm sure you will be attending. Super proud of our boys and girls, state qualifiers, as well as our head coaches, Jeff Lester for our boys and John Sullivan for our girls. Just want to congratulate Ayana Brooklyn Brook, Chinny Kennedy, Kristen, Mayanika Takira, and Gianna, who Coach Sullivan will talk more about here in a minute. You represented Bolingbrook High School very well and should be extremely proud of yourselves, although Kennedy will be moving on to Syracuse and Mayanika will be at Villanova. To Ayana, Brooklyn Brook, Chinny, Kristen, Takira, and Gianna, we cannot wait to see what you do next year. Congratulations to all of our girls, state qualifiers, on an outstanding season. And with that, I will bring up Coach Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Enjoy your fishing trip next week. Again, my name is John Sullivan. I'm the head coach for the girls' track and field at Bolingbrook High School. I'm here to recognize our state qualifying four-by-one 100 runners, as well as a couple of alternates that were part of this squad. I'd also like to mention that this team took first place in a very competitive Hinsdale sectional with a time of 48.91 to advance to state. While we didn't make it to the finals at the state, I'm very proud of this group and most of these girls will be returning with us next season, so I'm anxious to see that. Okay, so I'd like to bring up Brooklyn boys, who will be a junior, and Takira Moore, who are both alternates for us. Some of the girls that did participate and were part of the state qualifying four-by-one, Kristen Johnson, who will be coming back next year as well. Ziana Jones. And saving our most decorated runner for last, who was also our captain, our most valuable player, who also qualified not only in the four-by-one, but also the 200 and the 400-meter events, and did run all of those events and made it back in time for graduation in the same evening. So I know she got there, she got there pretty late, but it's funny because we were able to catch her on video stream on the way back, on our way back from the state meet to watch her graduate. So once again, Mayanika Jackson, who will be attending Villanova University and also participating in track and field. And our last state qualifier, who's kind of got a neat story here, Kennedy Perkins, who, give you a little story, background with this one, is my throws coach came up to me, he said, yeah, I've got this girls' basketball player that wants to come out for, and this was kind of late in the season, it was in the spring, he's like, yeah, she wants to just continue getting in shape for basketball. Quite honestly, I didn't know anything about Kennedy, but I'm like, all right, whatever, you know, whatever we can get will help us out. So she came out and didn't even know how to throw the discus or the shot put, just went out there and just basically used her, used her all her might and each, as each meet went by, she would throw it further and further. We go to the sectional and she goes out there and she wins the sectional in the shot put. She's never done this sport before. This is the only time she's ever been doing it. So she qualified for state, which is kind of a neat story, but she is going to Syracuse on a full ride scholarship for basketball. So once again, I'd like to bring up all-state Kennedy Perkins.
Well, you gotta lead them. You gotta lead them, John. You go shake hands, too.
I think Kennedy is the only student at Bolingbrook High School that went to two state finals, one being girls' basketball state finals, where we finished third place, and of course, track where she was a state qualifier. So great season to our girls' track team. I hope I don't steal too much of your thunder, Coach Lester. We had our first state champion in boys' track and field in 1992 with Darnell Carter, winning the discus event at that year's IHSA Boys Track and Field State Finals. Since then and up until this year's state finals, we had seven more state champions, four of which were on the 1999 four-by-one team. I had a conversation with Coach Lester recently and he told me that after last season, Brett Wasick, who won the 800-meter race, Brett said after last season that he was going to be a state champion this year. Well Brett, you became the eighth rated to be crowned a state champion in our boys' track and field program, and how sweet to do it by defeating last year's champion. Brett, you did what you set out to accomplish. Your efforts are a reminder that if you put your mind to something, if you set goals and if you are willing to put in the work to get there, you can accomplish anything in life. Brett, we wish you all the best at the University of Iowa and cannot wait to watch you while you experience even greater success. And at this point, I'll bring up Coach Lester.
Hi, thank you to the school board. I'm Jeff Lester. I'm the head boys' track and field coach at Bolingbrook. I'm here to talk about Brett. Brett is a perfect example of what Valley View School District and what Bolingbrook High School can be. He sets himself into an incredibly high standard. And just like what Mr. Rose just said, not too much long after the meeting we had last year for him recognizing as a state qualifier in the 800, you know, he set that goal of being a state champion in the 800. And he's had a long path to get here. And I've mentioned it to the team several times, his freshman year, we had six distance guys on the team. This year, his senior year, we had over 25. That was directly related to him, his brother, his other teammate Joshua, incredible leaders for the team, buying into that culture and making everyone around him better. Last year, I know at the state meet, like I mentioned, was not what he wanted. I think he finished 20th, 21st, somewhere around there, and was not satisfied. Even at sectionals this year, he got second place. Not many guys get second place at sectionals and then go on to be a state champion. He was taking on the defending state champion, who is top 10 in the nation currently. And everyone that came up to us would be like, you know, hey, do you think, is Brett gonna, you know, is he okay with getting second place? And we were like, no, he's gonna win. We believe he can win. He believes he can win. And he absolutely did that. There's some times in coaching and in teaching and just in life in general where you have these moments that are just perfectly etched in your memory. I know Brett had one. I had one myself in that last 20 meters, that picture up there of him just inching out, the defending state champion and winning state. That's going to sit with me forever. And Brett, I can't thank you enough. It's been one of the honors of my life to coach you. He's going to Iowa next year on a scholarship for track and he's also going to be running in the national meet on Friday in Philadelphia. So we're really excited for him. And to show our gratitude for Brett, Mr. Rose thankfully, and the team has got something As we're opening it up here, we have, was it seven other ones from our individual state champions?
Yep, so this will be the next one to go up.
Oh yeah, by the way. Thank you, everyone.
Last and certainly not least, the Golden Apple Scholarship recipient.
Thank you, President Quigley, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. At this time, I'd like to ask Human Resources Director Ravell Polak and Strategic Project Coordinator Kathy Ales to step to the podium. We're here tonight to recognize one of our students who has received an extremely prestigious scholarship, and this is part of one of our efforts to grow our own educators in our district. And this has an honor that I think has probably surpassed our wildest expectations as well, and we're thrilled that it is being done by one of our very own Bolingbrook High School graduates. So I'm going to turn over the podium to these ladies so that we can honor Ms. Lauren Hirdlicka, who is the recipient of the Golden Apple Scholarship Award. So Ms. Polak, going to start us off.
Good evening to the board and the senior leadership team. As Dr. Nash said, Human Resource Department has strengthened our partnership with Golden Apple Scholarship Illinois to identify potential educators for our district, starting as early as high school. The Golden Apple Scholar of Illinois program is a scholarship that identifies talented high school seniors and first and second-year college students who have the promise and drive to be excellent teachers. Catherine Ales, Strategic Coordinator, has supported our aspiring student educators in applying for the Golden Apple Scholarship. Ms. Ales is proud to present Laura, our very own Bolingbrook High School graduate, as the highly competitive Golden Apple Scholarship recipient.
Lauren Hirdlicka has been a VVS student since kindergarten through 12th grade. She has had several educators inspire her and influence her to pursue education as a career. However, Lauren credits her second-grade teacher, Mrs. Hernandez from McGee, for igniting the passion in education. It is Lauren's hope to return to VVSD as an educator to inspire students and give back to a community who has supported her inside and outside the classroom. Lauren will be attending ISU this fall. Congratulations, Lauren, on becoming a Golden Apple Scholar.
You're welcome. We'll see you in a few years for student teaching and then soon after. Okay. Thanks, Kathy.
Now onto the exciting part of the meeting. Treasures report, Mr. Gazzafi.
Treasures Action Report 6.1 includes the monthly financial reports, including statement of revenue and expenditures and equity, the balance sheets for funds 1 through 11 and 90, summary of revenue and expenditures, as well as the interim obligations for the month of May totaling $6,525,172.35 for your consideration and action.
Some moved. Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Schedule of bills, Mr. Gazzafi.
Yeah, schedule of bills. We've got five funds totaling $2,349,804.11, also for your action this evening.
Is there a motion?
So, second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis.
Yes.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. State funding update, Gary.
Yes. As part of the Treasures Information Report, we've got the summary of investments, the state funding update, the property taxes received, as well as all schools' trust account activity. State funding update shows $200,000 being due and owed to the school district for three different programs. Right now, the oldest one is, excuse me, 160 days, that's driver's ed, relatively small amount. Three-quarters of the amount owed is evidence-based funding and is only 15 days in arrears. Not anything too troubling, but something to keep an eye on, so.
Any questions on that? Oh, thank you. Property taxes received, all schools' trust of funds. This is your last time, folks. This is Gary's last meeting, so if you've got any questions...
Yeah, he needs to slow it down because, you know, we get it, it's your last meeting, sir, but slow down there.
Mr. Gazzafi, consent agenda items.
We've got seven, excuse me, seven items on the consent agenda items, beginning with the board meeting minutes from the 5/23 meeting, executive session meetings from the same date, a resolution to 2223 providing for the transfer of funds from the Education Fund and Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund for principal and interest obligations, approval of caretaker agreement for the purpose of implementing the use of a facility dog, renewal of our treasures bond and working cash bond, authorization to prepare tentative budget for fiscal year '23, and last, certain, and not least, serious safety hazard transportation areas. Recommend approval of the consent agenda as...
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Vinagis.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Moving down the agenda, liaison reports, any and all from my right, any and all from my left, seeing none, hearing none. I'll give a brief legislative update, if you will. State of Illinois is getting ready to go into the municipal, not the municipal, I'm sorry, the general primary election, the 28th of June. So if you're so inclined, please go out and select a primary ballot and vote for the people who you think are the best qualified to be on the ballot in November. That's it. Pretty simple. At some point, they will poll, never mind, I'll go through that at a subsequent meeting. We'll know whoever, everybody who's on the ballot and for the November election, so. Moving down the agenda, audience participation. Is anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, moving down the agenda. Ms. Nash, action report for certified professional technical administrative personnel.
Action Report 10.1 is our consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. We are seeking your approval this evening on all items.
Some moved.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
No.
Member Vinagis.
Yes.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Resolution 10.2.
Before we move on to that resolution, in that consolidated action report was the recommendation for the new principal at Jane Addams Middle School. I would like to invite Sonia Ruiz to the podium just to say a few words. She's asked to address the board, and we want to welcome her to the district.
I want to thank...
of a notice of remedial action to employee number 103276. We are seeking your approval on this resolution this evening.
So moved.
Second.
There are motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll be first.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Action Reports Number 11, Mr. Ghazafi.
Okay, we've got two this evening, beginning with our workers' compensation stop-loss insurance and third-party administrator renewal. Our program currently requires a $750,000 self-insured retention, or SIR. We'll be keeping that as our stop-loss amount. On a positive note, the state of Illinois has slightly reduced school classification rates on average by 1.5% for 2022. That being said, Star Insurance Company, who is our stop-loss carrier, is looking for a 2.48% increase on the expiring policy rate, which does reflect the specific excess coverage. So again, not too bad in that regard. As our third-party administrator, Gallagher Basset handles all of our claims, they are proposing a one-year extension with their per-claim rates increasing 5% over expiring, primarily to continue to retain the strong team that we have in place, and make sure that we are served well going into the next school year. And with that, I'm recommending that we approve Gallagher Basset Services as our third-party administrator for 2022/23, as well as the purchase of our excess compensation coverage with Star Insurance, at a total cost of $179,062, which includes the Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Service fee for the period July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis.
No.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes.
11.2.
12.2 is a recommendation for the RC Hill Edition Renovation Professional Services Agreement. RC Hill Elementary is in need of a new and larger kitchen cafeteria space in order to meet the school's needs. Over the years, the school has served meals from confined spaces located in the lower level of the school, making it a challenge for staff to meet the demands on a daily basis. Logistically, it's a huge challenge to get our food and supplies down to the lower level, as well as removing waste and garbage up to the main level. And so again, just nothing but a challenge for some time. Also necessitates accommodating lunch periods, which extend from 10:30 in the morning until 1:30 in the afternoon, and so three hours of lunch is very atypical for any of our elementaries. We've looked at this current school footprint, and it really does not allow for any remodeling of space within the building to fully address the deficiencies that we find ourselves in. We've had initial studies and concept plans prepared as far back as late 2019. We've had in-depth meetings with Nutrition Department, our Facility Operations District, and School Administrators, as well as Principal Ellis, to discuss the concept plans that have taken place over the last several months. We presented a final concept plan with the Board Finance Committee in May, and the exhibit is included in the packet. Included in the plan are other renovations as well. These are prompted by the new kitchen and cafeteria sighting. This would include relocation of two multi-need classrooms from where the new kitchen and cooler freezer is to be located, to the existing media center room, which was previously two classrooms. Utilizing a portion of the existing media center for location of two psychology offices for greater privacy and space, as well as locating them closer to the student population they serve. Relocating the nurses' office to allow for more central and direct access for the entire building, reconfiguring the main vestibule to provide a security booth, allowing for a more secure access into the school, relocation of the media center to the vacated cafeteria space on that lower level, which would allow for a larger media center, and reuse of the current location for the two classrooms noted above. Also providing support spaces for offices and small group meeting and vacated kitchen area adjacent to the new media center. Our district architect, Whiten Company, has prepared a professional service proposal with an architectural fee of 7.9% of the projected cost of the work. Based on the preliminary budget estimate, that amount of the fee is $470,050, with an estimated cost of work to be $5,950,000. The fee percentage is consistent with a master agreement between Whiten and Valley View and falls within industry standards for professional architectural engineering services on a project of this magnitude. It is also our intent to bring another action plan at a later date for actual construction of the project that will detail the delivery method, a refined schedule, and cost of construction. The project has been identified as part of our district five-year capital improvement plan. Proposed schedule, completion of construction drawings in August of this year, with bidding and foundation, utility, and earthwork beginning as early as September of '22, starting construction fall of '22, with completion in August of 2023 for occupancy and use of space for the fall semester of 2023. With that, I'm recommending that we approve the architectural and engineering contract with Whiten Company Incorporated for professional design services for the RC Hill Edition and renovation project for a fee of 7.9% of construction cost.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, is there any discussion?
I have a question, President Quigley. That percentage point, that architectural fee of $470,050, what is that paying for? Their oversight, architectural design, what actually does that pay for?
I'd refer you to the Exhibit B, the construction letter, the contract, scope of services would attend pre-bid meetings, bid openings, pre-con meetings, review all project submittals, provide written responses to RFIs, complete periodic site visits, site visit, walk-through with Will County ROE punch list, and walk-through to confirm punch list completion, as well as a statement of completion and application for occupancy to the Will County ROE. In addition to that, obviously, provide professional services, including architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and civil engineering. So really, everything but the construction.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that folks understand why we're paying them that, because, I mean, obviously, that is the standard fees out there, so that totally makes sense.
I will say, Leo, Mr. Vinagis, the fee is very competitive. We have kept those fees in check for some time. We've had a longstanding relationship with Whiten. We've got two representatives here from Whiten this evening, prepared to answer any questions that, you know, may come up that I would not be able to answer. But it's been a good relationship, and again, I think they've treated the district very fairly over the years, and again-
And would you say that Whiten Company is a reputable company out of the state of Illinois that has done buildings for us and hit this school district in the past?
I'm sorry, what was the question, I'm sorry?
I says, Whiten Company is a reputable company from the state of Illinois that has done buildings for us and other schools within the state?
They certainly are. I think we've, again, longstanding relationship, that they built the school we're sitting in right here now. There's been a lot of business-
Excellent, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, sir. I'm very familiar with their architectural work. I just want to make sure the public understands why we're spending these $5 million, and who we're paying it to. So, thank you, sir.
Gary, real quick, for clarification, you said the 7.9% includes the architectural fee? You said the fee includes the architectural and the drawings and renderings as well?
Correct.
So Gary, what is the $15,000 fee for reimbursement expenses?
Expenses would be in addition, as they would be for any architect contract. Any expenses incurred that would be billed directly to the account or to the project would be outside of that fee. That fee is strictly for professional services.
Any other questions?
Gary, you didn't think we were going to let you out of here at your last meeting without asking you questions, right?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote is in order.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Vinagis.
Yes.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Action Report, Ms. Kinder's not here, are we doing, who's doing-
I am taking Action Report 12.1.
You got it?
That report, I do. This evening, we're seeking your approval on Action Report 12.1. This is the Consolidated District Plan. So the Illinois State Board of Education has a system for consolidating and streamlining the federal grant applications and management process, which is known as the Consolidated District Plan, and that is a prerequisite for us before we can submit for federal funds that fund several of our programs that support students and student achievement. The needs assessment that goes along with this particular plan, the data comes in kind of toward the end of the year, and so we have to have all of that come in so that we can fully do the comprehensive needs assessment that's required of this plan. So just as we've done in the past, where we've asked for going, taking this directly to approval, so that we can access those funds as soon as they become available on July 1, we are requesting the approval of the Consolidated District Plan tonight as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Vinagis.
Yes.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Action Report, Ms. Kinder's not here, are we doing, who's doing-
I am taking Action Report 12.1.
You got it?
That report, I do. This evening, we're seeking your approval on Action Report 12.1. This is the Consolidated District Plan. So the Illinois State Board of Education has a system for consolidating and streamlining the federal grant applications and management process, which is known as the Consolidated District Plan, and that is a prerequisite for us before we can submit for federal funds that fund several of our programs that support students and student achievement. The needs assessment that goes along with this particular plan, the data comes in kind of toward the end of the year, and so we have to have all of that come in so that we can fully do the comprehensive needs assessment that's required of this plan. So just as we've done in the past, where we've asked for going, taking this directly to approval, so that we can access those funds as soon as they become available on July 1, we are requesting the approval of the Consolidated District Plan tonight as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Vinagis.
Yes.
Member Perrow.
Yes.
Member Bedurs.
Yes.
Vice President Zach.
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes. Who's got this? Strategic plan? Well, that's the one we took off? Yep, taken
that off, okay. We're skipping that item because Ms. Kinder's not here this evening. Moving down the, well, we don't have a superintendent report, I know you all came for this, the legal beagle report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, legal beagles. AFT report, seeing none, hearing none. Valley View Council report, seeing none, hearing none. Valley View Office Personnel Council report, same as the others. Old business, well, we have old business, that's Gary Ghazafi, he's getting older and he's leaving.
Old business, new business.
Old business is departing the building, so we can do this in any particular place, so why don't we do it here? Gary, I don't know how long ago I met you, but probably 14 years ago or something along those lines, and I did my homework, and I asked a few people who were in the business, if, I said, I, you know, I got this superintendent who I don't know very well, and I got a business guy who I don't really know very well, so I asked some people who I knew who were in the business, and you got glowing remarks from your peers, and that's a big thing in my book. People knew you in the business, IASBO, Illinois School Business Officials, thank you, you're very welcome. And Gary, at some point in time, was the president, I think, probably about that time, perhaps, I forget the years, yeah. And so I asked around and what have you, and I just, I got glowing reports, and then I got to know Gary, and I will tell you that we have steered through some very interesting times. You know, the economic meltdown of 2008, '07, '08, '09, when it was all starting to come together. You know, what's the Saturday Night Live deal, when you goes, remember that time when you called me at 2:00 in the morning? Remember that was really cool? And you called me and said, yeah, we can't have school tomorrow on a day that was like 70 degrees and sunny, because the buses were stuck behind a leaking pipeline right down by our bus barn? So that was really cool, yeah. So then, so then that day, I said, well, Gary, why don't we find a way to get the buses out of there and get the bus drivers onto the buses? So we did, and it was probably done about 3:30 in the morning. And then the next day, it was really cool, I got a phone call from Gary again, he said, hey, you're not going to believe this, but we're evacuating one of the schools because of a bomb threat. And I said, oh, that's great, seriously? He goes, no, really, seriously. And it turned out to be that the EPA had put filtration device, or air quality detector devices, around RC Hill School, because it was near where the pipeline leak was. But we had the bomb squad, and we had everybody, and the news, and everything else, and by the time they kind of figured that out, was like, wow, maybe we should just not have had school today. But in any event, it's going to be, as I've told John, your replacement, you've got some big shoes to fill. The door's always open. I hope you and I can chase a white ball around the golf course at some point. It's been a pleasure working with you, and you are the personification of professionalism in your business. And to me, I think, in my humble opinion, that's the ultimate compliment somebody can give you. Thank you, sir. We have a small parting gift for you and a card, but I thank you on behalf of the other board members here, but I just want to thank you for all the time and commitment you've done, because this isn't a seven-hour, eight-hour day job. Again, when a guy gets a phone call at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, his first question to me is, why are you up? And I said, why are you calling? Because that can't be good. So thank you so much for all your dedication to the district here. Hey, the roast is on, anybody else who wants to jump in? Go right ahead.
I just wanted to say a quick note. I know that, you know, when I look at the diction and I see fiduciary responsibility, it's your face there, Gary. You have always brought forward some very fiscally sound recommendations, and always had the best interest of our community and our kids and our educators. You know, one of the big pieces that I know you and I haven't always agreed, and sometimes we've logged horns, but you've always managed to help me understand that financial aspect of our business. And, you know, I think you mentioned when, I know earlier or last year, you were recognized at the Illinois Association of School Boards, and you mentioned the story of how you got into the business of the education. I think you started working at a school district, either cutting grass or something of that sort, in the maintenance department, and you found your way into what you're currently doing. And I will tell you, Gary, you will be a mister. And one thing that I will say has improved with time, not just obviously the level of experience and intelligence, but your haircut has also improved as these years have improved. So congratulations on your retirement, you will be mister.
Gary, I just want to say thank you for all the time that you have served, and even my late husband, you made an impression on him, so I just want to say thank God for you, and may God continue to bless you in your retirement, and your family, and your mother. He has the coolest mother around, God. She is so cool, you know, she just took a picture, we became friends, and we were social meeting just like that, that night, so, you know, that's a blessing too, so God bless you, Gary.
If you would, I do have a little speech prepared, and so if you would just be so kind to indulge me here, as I close this, my final board meeting here in Valley View, I have to reflect on my 17 years as an administrator here. I started on my educational career back in 1992. I've worked in three different districts during my career, all of them distinct, and all of them filled with great people. Overall, I estimate I have participated in over 560 Board of Education meetings in my career. Each district has provided me with a rich experience and long relationships, from my days in District 89, Maywood, Morris Park, and Broadview, where I attended school there as a kindergartner through 8th grade, to West Chicago 94, where I worked with a phenomenal team and gained insights into how a comprehensive high school truly operates. I'd like to thank so many people from those districts, where we have worked together and committed to make a difference in students' lives. To the many superintendents and school boards I've had the pleasure of working with, thank you for your commitment to excellence day in and day out in support of public education. Which brings me back here to Valley View, where I've had the great privilege to have served as assistant superintendent for the last 17 years. To the entire staff in our school system, from our frontline nutrition workers to our custodians, our bus drivers, to our most veteran of teachers, to the team in the booth, thank you for doing whatever it took to make Valley View School System world-class. To my administrative services directors, many of who are with me here tonight, better known as the A Team, who are truly among the very best anywhere in what they do, I am truly humbled to have served alongside each of you, to have made a difference in our students' lives. To the many staff from the various governmental agencies in and around our communities we serve, thank you for your intergovernmental cooperation you have provided to maximize the value we provide to our communities. To the Valley View Board members, past and present, thank you for your support and structure to move our district forward. Your leadership has been exceptional and revered, especially considering the large paychecks you don't receive-
So I'm going to make him go up to the podium so we can give this, and Mr. Blaney can take a picture. Any new business before the board this evening? Seeing none, hearing none, moving down the agenda. Freedom of information requests will be on our website. Mr. Blaney is our freedom of information officer. Those requests will go through him. Any announcements by the board? Any announcements by the administration? If not, any announcements by the public? If, oh, yes, we will be going back into a closed session for a contractual discussion where we finish conducting our public business this evening here, so we wish you all a happy June, and we'll see you in July. Motion to adjourn general session and return to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Have a good evening. Thank you.[1684.63]